Laura Gabski, not here. Brooke Taylor.
Yes.
Mike Meyer, not here. Steve Olson.
Here.
I am here, President Albert here.
Just a reminder that this meeting is a meeting of the Board of Education held in public for the purpose of conducting a school district's business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is a time for comments or questions by the members of the public during the meeting as indicated on the agenda. Members of the public wishing to address the board on any of the topics included on tonight's agenda may do so by completing a public comments signup sheet and handing it to Anne up here in the front. Comment should be focused on the items being considered by the board and should be restricted to no more than three minutes in length. Action taken at today's meeting is to forward the recommendation for final approval at our next regular school board meeting, which will be next Monday, March 6th. With that, we'll move into the report of the superintendent.
Okay, our first informational item is our school board student representative Erin Johnson. He's not here tonight. He'll come next week. Due to the weather, he's gonna come next week. Second informational item is presentation by Principal Parish. Light's Welcome.
Yeah. Anne, I'm clicking or you're clicking? You click. On? Oh, now we're in action. Okay.
Fancy transition there.
Special effect. Hi, everybody. Danielle Parish, Principal of Northern Lights. I'm excited to share some updates. I haven't chatted with you guys since I think I was here in September. Lots has happened since then. Some things I'm going to circle back and touch on that we talked about earlier this year. Some celebrations that I want to highlight that have been happening at Northern Lights. We have continued our positive school community activities. We've had celebrations throughout the year. We've had, continue with our monthly assemblies. Our staff have done, have been working really hard on culture just amongst their staff. Excuse me. So we've had treats every other Friday, like breakfast treats. We've had wellness activities for students and staff. We did a global day of play as an entire school. We had some community partners come in for an evening activity that we called our Wellness Night, promoting health and wellness amongst our students and staff, all of which have gone very well. Another celebration, our PLC teams and our new EMLSS teams, they have been working together for students, really focusing on targeted interventions. And we have phenomenal paras. All the celebrations and the next slides are the challenges I gathered feedback from the staff. So these are pieces of information that they wanted highlighted at tonight's meeting. So this is, these are celebrations and challenges from the staff. And it was highlighted multiple times how great our paras are. So I wanted to include that. We started rolling out our parent perception surveys just this week. So some very early preliminary results. They're very positive. The parents have shared a lot of appreciation for the work that the teachers are doing for their kids. I've been really excited. I was reading through them today. And we have conferences this week. So when the parents are in the building, we're having them complete them just to try to increase our participation rates. We're hoping for at least 60% of our parents participating. Lot of positive comments about the work that our teachers are putting in for the kids. And they're excited. I was excited to hear that. Some of the challenges that have been highlighted in the feedback that I received, you know, we continue to work with some students that have some pretty significant behavior challenges and the mental health needs are still there. We've talked about this all year long. We're facing some challenges with our attendance again, just as we were every year that I've been there, which is why one of our goals that I'm going to talk about is around attendance. But it still continues to be a challenge for us, getting our kids to school. And frequent comment in our parent perception surveys is our parking challenges in the morning when parents are dropping off their students. We're continuing to find some unsafe situations. We've got people out there, it's just the morning drop off. How can we get better at that? We're still troubleshooting what we can do there. The goals that I was referencing, our attendance goal, we really wanted to, by spring of 2023, have at least 80% of our students with fewer than 10 absences as measured by our attendance in Power School. And our most recent data poll, we currently have 23% of our students that have missed 10 days or more. I did a quick little comparison. At the end of the 21-22 school year, we were at 37% of our population. So we're shy of our goal, but we're still ahead of where we were at the end of the year last year. Some of the things that we're doing to address our attendance, our classroom teachers are working with the families. They're working with their PLC teams monthly, making contact with the families directly in addition to our school social worker and of course, the attendance letters and the communication that the admin is making with families as well. We do monthly attendance awards. Those have been a big celebration, a big hit. And I'm going to share a little bit about that on the next slide. Our kids that have in the past been habitually truant, we set up special meetings with our social worker and the kids love this. They look forward. It's Thursday, I get to meet with Ms. Eva. They're so excited about it. And that's been going really well. Eva is our social worker that works in all the elementary schools and she's been doing a phenomenal job with the attendance and the kiddos that she's been working with. We send positive postcards home. Again, I'm going to give credit to Eva. She is the one that drives the initiative with the positive postcards. And first grader, I sent a postcard home with her and she came back and she really appreciated the mail. And she asked if I could send herself stuffed squirrel too with my next postcard. So she loves getting the mail. Another action item, we continue to communicate with our families about the importance of coming to school and the impact it has on their achievement and their social, emotional wellbeing and their connections with their friends at school. This is just a snapshot of our attendance celebrations. You can see, it's really small, the highlighted cells are the class that had the best attendance as a whole for that month. So if you look in kindergarten, for example, Churney's the teacher that's on the top row. In November, she had 93.27% attendance rate for the whole month. The attendance rates as a class look pretty good, but we still have 23% of our kiddos who have missed 10 days or more. So as a whole, they're doing pretty good. We want to celebrate everything that's going well. So this kind of highlights, I think the one, the celebration we did yesterday was, we have a class that was at 97%. Yeah, Ms. Keoghan's class was at 97% attendance rate for the month of February, which is phenomenal. So that's a big deal. Our second goal that we've been working hard on this year is we really want to increase our, you know, the kiddos with our reading and through revisiting and strengthening our PLCs, we want 80% of our students to attain a level of on track or low risk as measured by our district reading assessments. This, we knew this was going to be a challenging goal for us. And, but we have to keep pushing. And so right now, we're, our K1, we're using our early reading assessments and for 2-5, we're using our AA reading assessments. We're tracking at approximately 47% or 44% on track or low risk. Keeping in mind, this is one data point on one day. Another piece of our action plan that we're focusing on is what's happening with our kiddos that are in LLI, those kids that are not in the low risk category. So I wanted to celebrate the work that our EMLSS teachers have been doing. And you can see by this slide, in first grade, we started LLI in October. We had 52 students that were at high risk, which is significant. From October to December, we had 10 out of our 14 kids make almost one year's worth of growth in those three months. They were considered caught up and they exited the intervention program. Our second graders, and the months that we looked at here was September to December, nine out of 14 students made a half a year of growth. Three of the kids made one year growth. We had a student that made a year and a half's worth of growth in that short period of time and another one that made just under a half a year. In third grade, we had 14 kids, eight of them made a year and a half's worth of growth from September to December. They're still not low risk, but they're making huge progress. And so it's, it's not captured in the number that I shared on the previous slide, but what they are doing is impressive. And I do want to, I did want to highlight what's being done for our kiddos. Some of the action steps that we've taken is, you know, we're working on our PLC process. They've been, as a team, focusing on some essential standards work. The coaches have been over to our building doing a lot of training on our PD days, on effective core and small group instruction. We as a whole are looking at effective research-based instructional strategies and we're sharing best practices with our colleagues across grade levels. And that's happening at staff meetings and our PD days. And then our data analysis that the coaches and our EMLSS teachers are doing at PLC times, looking at, okay, where are the deficit skill areas for certain kids and what are we going to do for their intervention? And that's where we're kind of pulling the LLI students. And you can see the targeted work that they're doing is making, having a big impact for some of our kiddos.
What do you guys want to know? Very comprehensive.
Well, I had to have a presentation, you know, this time. I was feeling like I got a.
I know. I put a lot of pressure on you. I know.
So the LLI would, for fact, please explain that a little bit more.
Level literacy intervention. So it's our intervention program that our EMLSS teachers are doing. And it's a five-day intervention. The kiddos get 30 minutes every day.
So we were, when we were there on the visit, we saw some of that with the EMLSS teachers earlier.
They were getting started with the kids. Yep.
And then the phonemic awareness, is there, what are you seeing that, where are the biggest gains made? And I spoiled, you know, that's really.
That's a general, yeah, that's a big question.
Depending on where the, where the student is at and what their repeating deficit is.
Deficit areas are.
Right.
When they're looking at the data, if they're seeing like, there's a group of students, maybe they're not in the EMLSS, like the LLI groups. If there's a group that have kind of same trends and patterns, the teachers are working in their small groups during reading boost or workshop time. And that's when they're really targeting that. And some kiddos are making great gains and some are slow moving. But the flexible grouping that they're doing, I'm, it's been fun to kind of watch how they're working as a team. The teachers are sharing kids now. And so some teachers are really like certain components of it. So they might take those kids that have the extra work in that area. And after six weeks or two weeks, you know, whatever skill they're working on, then they reassess, is it working or is it not? And if it's not, they keep doing it. If it is, then they change it to a different intervention.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, thanks. All right, one more informational item. I wanted to give an update to the board on our first school consolidation advisory committee meeting. So we met a week ago. I invited anybody from that committee to come tonight and share an update. Sarah has volunteered to come and provide, you're representing Great Lakes, right?
Yeah.
Yes. So Sarah's one of our parents representing Great Lakes. Danielle is also on our committee representing a staff person at Northern Lights. We have a staff person or a parent and a parent from each of our elementary schools on the committee. We also have invited a staff person and a parent at the secondary level just to represent that perspective in the committee as well. So with that, I'll just kind of lean on Danielle and Sarah to share a little bit about what we've done in our first meeting. Our next meeting is actually tomorrow. So you want to give a little bit of an update on what we've done so far?
Yeah. Absolutely, I do.
Jump right in.
The work that we did was, it was really fun to kind of bring all the different schools and representatives together. We had, I thought we had a good balance of teachers, parents, schools that are in the city, schools that are owned out in the country. We started off just talking about what's our role and what's the purpose of our, why are we here? What work are we going to be focusing on? And we all talked in small groups. I wasn't sitting with Northern Lights parents. I, we, we all had a side seat. So we had a.
We mixed.
Yeah, everybody was mixed. So that was good. We looked at the budget. We got an overview of the budget. We looked at enrollment trends. We looked at projection, enrollment projections. We talked about the capacity study that was done. We went through that. We talked about the population study that has been done. And then we also looked over some facility needs. And everything that we've looked at is available on the district website. And we had some group work time to talk about, you know, what questions do you have? What, what else do we need to be able to make an informed recommendation to the, to the school board? And so more data has been requested. We wanted to get some more information, like specifically around like busing and just, just more numbers. So we had a better understanding of the big picture of all the different schools. I feel like there's a lot of really good conversations that had happened. Had poster boards up all over and we were sharing out with each other. So is there anything that you want to add that we did?
No, I don't think so. I think it was, it was, it was a great perspective and it was very well split. And like you said, we weren't sitting with our friends and we weren't sitting with anybody that we knew. So that was nice to work together to reach the common questions that we all had.
Yeah. And it was stressing. We gotta, we gotta keep what's best for kids in mind as a whole. And, you know, not specifically what's best for Northern Lights. And I think the group that I was working with specifically, they did a nice job of that. That was, you know, we'll see what happens tomorrow. I think we'll probably change your groups up a little bit and.
Change your groups up so that they can work with new people.
Yeah.
We did collect all of the questions and all of the information that was requested from everybody. So we will share all of those updates tomorrow. We've been working on getting that ready for tomorrow's meeting. So we'll share some of that and start, you know, thinking through next steps for our committee. And, and then we'll post all of that information as well tomorrow. And we'll bring back another update to the board. I can have an update actually probably next week too, because we'll have net.
Yeah.
Anything else, Sarah? Well, we appreciate you taking the time to be on our committee and driving through the snow to be here. And we know you have a meat rapple to get to.
Thanks, Sarah.
So was that first being like gather data, see the data, the next meeting is kind of decide where to go? Or is there going to be another meeting or is it just those two?
Right now, the agenda that I have, the agenda is really built on what the committee needs. So one of the questions we asked as part of the exit survey is what, what do you need in the next meeting? So part of it was information. So we planned for about half a meeting to be able to distribute more information regarding their questions. I think we are going to probably start getting into some of those preliminary discussions to get a checkpoint as to where people are at. So we can kind of get a pulse on where the group as a whole is to kind of figure out what our next steps are. I think one of the last questions I'd plan to ask the group tomorrow night is really assess our progress and assess what we need to do in the next meeting. So we'll, we'll kind of, we'll take a gauge from that, then the individuals who are part of that team. Did we have signup?
I did, yeah. I had a question specifically about this topic.
And I. Pick them up if you want. Don't have to.
My name's Amy Teagle. My son is a fifth grader at Four Corners. So I don't really have a stake in the game as far as what schools stay open or close. But I had some questions in regards to, is it one school that's looking to be closed or two? Because some of the information that's out there says that it looks like what the job of six schools is then could be done with five. But then when it says that they're looking at consolidating two schools, are we looking at consolidating two schools and closing two? Or are we looking at, are we looking at just one?
So let me answer that. So when we had the outside agency who came to share the capacity study in February, we asked the question to that firm, do we have the potential of educating our elementary students in five elementary schools, four elementary schools? Is it recommended we keep six elementary schools? And the answer from that outside firm with their area of expertise is that they would recommend considering the closing of one of our smallest schools because there's a small number of students and those can be absorbed into those larger schools. They did not recommend closing more than one and they did not recommend closing one of our larger elementary schools.
Okay. As far as buildings are concerned, my only thought is, and I'm hopeful that this gets back to the committee, is no matter how you draw your lines after the fact, your capacity study is basically a moot point because your capacity changes based off the lines that you draw. I've been on the local volunteer fire department out there for 20 plus years. The more kids that you take and put on a bus, now you're talking, how many hours of rides are we looking at in a day? Your sleep is important for these kids that are younger. All of their learning abilities, everything that you consider as far as keeping the schools. I'm starting, Four Corners already starts at nine o'clock or nine, 10 in the morning, just because we don't have the buses to get from here to there. One of the points that I wanted to, I called our local town board and she had all the information for Douglas County. And the biggest thing that I was concerned about, or not concerned about it, I guess, is the two schools that you're talking about have had 29 new dwellings within the last year. That changes a whole lot and could potentially change families that move in or move out. I know we're looking at capacities being down and enrollment numbers being down, but we're just barely post COVID. People aren't going back to school yet. They're learning, we're going back to work yet. People aren't even okay with walking around in store and they're utilizing all of the pickups and drop offs that they can still. So it's one of those things that I really think is important that they think about and the safety of the kids that they're putting on there and the amount of liability that they're putting on the district, putting those number of kids and bringing them into town. I did send an email off to all of the board members. I've heard back from almost all but two. And I appreciate that because it really makes people feel like they're actually hearing what's being said. Like I said, my kid is already going to be bussed into town. So whether that's the case or not, I'm looking at it from all the other kids that are there. No matter how you draw those lines, that changes that. And we built a new school that's going to completely add to the, to the cost of the district. You know, I would, my question is, is the information that's on the website, is that the only information that was gone on? Is it all listed there? Because the one thing that's not listed there is the operational budget for every single school. You ask that committee to do what is best for every, for whole district, but they're only being provided with the information for two schools that are being considered. I don't know that that's what's best for the district. You can't, you can't ask them to judge that and only give them the information for one, for two. So I just wanted to make sure I brought that up because I think the committee has their due diligence to ask for the operational budget for every single school out there and see what is being spent on. I took the time and I looked through the budget as a whole to see what was being spent on accounts payable. And there's some insane dollar amounts in there that are being spent. Like, I'm not sure of all the conferences that are going on and the travel and the hotels and the fees that are being spent for food and all that money are 100% necessary. Can they be done virtually? Can they be, can we cut costs in other places? I don't know. But it's worth asking all of those questions and not just saying, maybe, maybe these two, because they equal our $4 million will be the best cut. Just wanted to talk about it. Thank you.
Thanks, Sarah.
That's all I have.
That's all you got? All right. You had no action items. You had no discussion items. So with that, we'll move into the committee agendas, starting off with the teaching and learning committee. Steve O.
There are no action items, no discussion items, informational items tonight. Just one, presentation from Caitlin, Senior Project, CP planning, and an update from Superior Days last week.
Thanks for coming back. Thank you. As of noon today, I was bringing three students with me, but unfortunately, alls you get tonight is me. So hopefully next time I can have them with me. But yeah, so Senior Project, ACP, and then a little Superior Days at the end is kind of my plan. And any questions or things as, as I go through, anything, please, please let me know and I'll answer those. So first, I wanted to tap kind of our 9-12 vision this year under the broad umbrella of what we're calling the Senior Project. So little bit of context, last year was the first year that community service was required for all students, 9-12. Like that was the first year it was fully implemented, required. Everyone was expected to do it. So my big goal for this year was to build out what I kind of felt was the other missing side of that with the career exploration piece. So the senior year project has, you know, those two components, the career research with the job shadow and interviewing people in the field and the community service. And those two things, I think pair really well and complement each other really well. And we had the community service requirement, 9-12, but I didn't feel like we had that sort of partner to the community service requirement for our underclassmen to really mirror that senior year experience and kind of build up to that and make sure that they were having those experiences. So what we did this year was kind of intentionally add a career exploration experience for all students at each grade level. So they, these were things that, no matter what their class schedule looked like, these were experiences that they were able to have. So for our freshmen, we really leaned into our Keystone course with that also being a graduation requirement. All our freshmen taking Keystone, that was an easy way to reach all of those students and really use Keystone as a place to fill them up and support them. So they had that foundation for both of these, for all of these experiences through to their senior year, making sure they understood kind of that picture and that we could really support them in, kind of easing them into both that career exploration piece and the community service piece. So we created some service opportunities for freshmen to participate in as part of that class, to engage in as a large group, as well as some career exploration things, both, you know, projects and tasks in class, but also bringing all freshmen on what's called the Yellow Jacket for a Day to UWS. So whichever semester they have Keystone, they spend a day at UWS, kind of learning what it's like to be a college student. Like they meet with current students, they take a tour, they eat in the cafeteria, they spend some time in the wellness center. Like they get just a little taste of a lot of those things. And just really, for some of them, it's the first time they've actually been on campus, even though they live here in town. And so just trying to increase that exposure and kind of help them see, you know, what could be an opportunity for them in the future. Our sophomores, what that ended up looking like? We already had some career fairs happening at SHS that all students are invited to and are welcome to sign up to attend as many as they'd like. Our expectation this year for sophomores was that everyone attend at least one career fair, which, you know, had not been the expectation before. It was offered to them. But this year through advisory, we asked teachers to, you know, talk with students, look at the plan for the year, the different career fields that were going to be represented and have each student sign up for at least one of them. Our juniors, what that ended up looking like, and this I'm really excited about, and I'll talk a little bit more about this on a later slide too. But we started what we're calling Career Experience Days. So throughout the year, once a month, a career pathways highlighted. So next week, I am taking about 30 students who are interested in careers in the health field. And we're going to go to Ascenda. And they're going to spend about an hour with our kids talking about sort of the range of careers and options that they offer, both, you know, those that require education and training, but also their entry level positions that they have opened that kids could, you know, get soon to gain experience and all of that. We'll spend some time at UWS, looking at their health science program, what it might look like to go to a four-year school We'll spend some time at UWS, looking at their health science program, what it might look like to go to a four-year school in this pathway. And then some time at Fond du Lac, Travel and Community College, looking at what it might look like at a, a two-year school. If you're interested in these types of careers. So we've been, we've had quite a few of those. We have a few more planned this spring. But every junior, again, is given the opportunity and expected to attend at least one of those. Their community service this year was the teen mental health first aid training. So one thing that's been identified over the last few years from kids, from teachers, from, you know, the community. And one thing that a lot of times kids will ask, like, you know, well, this is something I'm passionate about. How can I do my community service around, you know, mental health? So we asked all juniors to participate in the teen mental health first aid training this year. And if they did so and completed some reflection and planning work for me afterwards, they earned their, their service hours that way. And then senior year has not changed at all. That looks pretty much exactly the same. And so a couple of other new things this year though, for our seniors, next week, which I'm very excited on March 7th, so next Tuesday, is our inaugural Senior Project Showcase Night. And so what this is, is essentially a new format for seniors to present their project. So historically, a senior is prepared a slideshow, they're in a room with three or five, four or five adults. They talk through their slideshow, give their presentation, get a little feedback, they pass, they don't, you know, go. But one thing that I saw and heard loud and clear last year is that our students are doing a lot of really cool things. And having them present that way, I feel like is a loss for us and for them. I think we can celebrate those really awesome things for them. We can show off those awesome things to the community. And it just can be a more open experience. And so we have about 20, low twenties, maybe a couple more, maybe a couple less by the time we get to Tuesday. Who have agreed to sort of go on this crazy adventure with me and try this out. So they'll be set up in the commons at the high school on Tuesday. And ready to talk about their, their projects. They'll have some artifacts, some pictures, some things. And ready to talk with anyone who shows up about their, their projects. So hoping that this is a more authentic way for them to share their learning and share their experience. And also just for us as a school and a district to kind of show off the, the really awesome students we have. So that's the one new thing, kind of for seniors this year. I also created a Google site that houses a lot of information and resources and is more easily accessible to parents as well. Students have a Google Classroom that has a lot of information in it, but that's not super user friendly, especially for parents and families. So kids, parents, families all have access to that Google site as well.
Yeah, you said this and I was writing. Who is invited to the showcase? Is it community members, parents?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
And it's also a conference night at the high school.
Okay.
So we're hoping we can also like, you know, it'll be open, yes, to anyone. So kids were asked to invite people. So they were all given some, you know, invitations and asked to invite friends, family, people that helped them with their project. You know, so yeah, really anyone who, who wants to come is, is invited. I've been trying to do what I consider like moderate advertising, like I want people there, but also I've never done it before. So I don't want us to be like overwhelmed either. So anyone as well. Also, March 27th, or 22nd, coming up soon, is sort of our kind of freshman sophomore day of service in a way. So that is the ACT day for juniors. So our ninth, 10th, and 12th graders aren't in the building that day. So we've planned a variety of different service projects if they want to take advantage of not having to come into school that day and go do their community service that day. We have quite a few things happening that day. Couple details about a couple of things I wanted to highlight that I think are, are pretty cool that have happened so far this year. These are some pictures of some of our freshmen. On the left, a large group of them on campus for our Yellow Jacket for a Day trip in the fall. We'll take the other half of them that did go in the fall on April 13th. So that's coming up. And then some of the service work that they did at the school forest this fall. So all freshmen went to the school forest. Half the day was like team building, community building. And then half the day was service projects in the forest in partnership with our construction academy at the high school. So the students in the construction academy kind of mentored our freshmen. And our freshmen worked on a variety of projects, cleaning the trails, building a new boardwalk. And it was really cool to see them be able to give back to the school forest. Because that's an experience that a lot of them have had a lot throughout elementary school. And so a lot of them were like, you know, reminiscing a little bit and telling stories about like when they used to come with their, their elementary classes. So that was a really cool, cool experience too. And then I pulled just a few quotes from students and feedback that I've gathered so far from some students who attended some of our career experience days up until this point. And just asking them for feedback, like what went well, what they wish we would have done, how we could improve it for next year. And then I just threw up some logos of some different partners and people who have been willing to work with us and host our students and, and spend some time with our students. And so I think those days have been really powerful and some really cool experiences. You know, I think if even one of those kids from each of those days realizes, oh, I didn't know I could get a job doing that here. Or, oh, I didn't realize like that I could, you know, go to a four-year college for this, or go to a two-year college for this. And I think that exposure and breaking down some of those barriers of the unknown is really powerful. And I tell the kids all the time, like whatever you choose to do after high school, if you're going to college, if you want to go to, you know, a two-year school, if you want to go right into the workforce, get an apprenticeship, like I want you to be prepared and be making that decision with all the information. So yeah, if college isn't for you, okay, but are you making that decision because you've done all the learning and all the investigating to really make that decision? Or do you just think that's the decision?
I love the second quote up there. I think that's why you're doing what you're doing. Students don't necessarily see themselves in those spaces and now they do.
Yes.
So that's, that's very cool.
Yep. And I think the one, the one kind of in the bottom right corner there, like I learned, I think that was from, so you know, students who are interested in arts and communication and things like that. They met with Swim Creative. And I think that presentation was really powerful. It was a former Superior High School grad too, which was really cool. So he was able to make some of those connections with them as well, but and his story was really powerful, but even just seeing that, you know, that the art is much more accepted for jobs than I previously thought. That there are options and what you're passionate about can lead you to a successful career. Any, or I don't know if I have one more side. But I guess any questions, I do have one more side. So this is just kind of my goals for this program, for, you know, Senior Project, for ACP in general. I think expanding these career experience days. You know, having done it a few times already this year, there's a lot of things I can already see in using the schedule and using our time difference and getting, you know, more businesses and employers and things like that into the day for them. Continuing to expand the group volunteer projects we offer. And making sure that that is, is something we have for our students. You know, ideally, especially by the time they're seniors, like we want them to have that independence and to go out and, you know, seek and make those connections. But realistically, you know, supporting them in doing that along the way. Continuing to build community partnerships in all areas, whether it's with the experience days or community service projects. Or coming in to hopefully view quite a few senior showcase presentations next year, whatever that might look like. Expanding and really defining our ACP opportunities for all students six, 12. So I've started working somewhat the middle school this year and looking at what career exploration things are happening there. How can we, you know, continue to build that as well? And how can we, how can I support that work to better support our middle schoolers who then will come up to the high school that are prepared to do the work we're asking them to do there? And just continuing to promote and make the work that our students are doing more visible. And help them be more active and integrated into the, the community. Questions about Senior Project, ACP related things?
I think you covered it pretty well. Thank you.
I'll mention just a little bit about Superior Days. We brought three students from SHS down to Madison this year for Superior Days. The first time a student delegation went since 2020. They went just before things shut down, February of 2020. There were also three other students from Douglas County, and you see them up there in the picture with the governor. And some students from other, other counties, UWS students. You know, and obviously local community members. I wish they were here today to tell you themselves. But in, in speaking for them, they seemed to genuinely have a great experience. When I asked them on the, the drive home, you know, what was the best part, right? So they spent Tuesday, listening to, you know, some different agency meetings. They went down to the University of Wisconsin Madison campus and did some things down there. They listened to the governor speak. Wednesday, they were in small groups lobbying legislators. And all three of them, which I know it was only three of them, but all three of them very confidently said, like, the meeting with legislators was like the best part of the experience. And kind of seeing that empowerment and that agency that they took was really, really, really cool. And we get told time and time again, if you've gone to Superior Days, you know this, that they listen to the kids more than they listen to us anyway, just like, I mean, we all kind of do. Like, that's why I wish they were here to, to be telling you this, right?
If they want to, if they want to come on Monday next, I can certainly incorporate them into our high school updates. So, yeah.
But yeah, they had a really great time. Erin Fezzi and I went and, you know, and talking to Erin while we were there and seeing, you know, the interactions the kids were having. There's, there's plans and Erin is very optimistic to send a larger group next year, hopefully. And, and continue to kind of commit to that and creating those experiences for them as well.
I heard it was very, it was a very good event.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They were in the paper.
All right. Well, thanks for all the information.
Thank you.
Stuff.
Very much.
I have nothing else. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Steve. Next we've got Budget and Insurance Committee with Brooke.
Great. I have three action items tonight. The first is gifts, grants, and bequests. Administration recommends approval to accept gifts, grants, and bequests received in the past month.
Okay, Brooke.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion?
Thank you.
Looks like we're out there working on the all-night. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. All right. My second action item is the new school activity account. The committee recommends approval of request for new school activity account for the NBC Spartan Sports Complex sponsorships, which will help with repairs needed in the next five years, the end of the original turf left.
Move to proof. Second.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion?
I just want to point out, we already have two sponsorships. So we're continuing. I know you're working through that with Ella.
We still have two more. We're waiting to hear back.
Are those some of the original sponsors?
Yeah, so far three out of the four.
But you've reached addition, you've reached out to additional ones to raise, yeah.
So repairs to the complex in the next five years. So are we five years in and then the next five years, because it's a 10-year life on the turf?
Yeah, I think about, we have about eight years, eight to nine years left on the turf. So the next five years, just maintaining it, all money after that, we're gonna start going towards that, I think. What's that?
Going towards the replacement.
Yeah, yeah. We'll start really reaching out to other businesses and start planning with that. That's in like the super early stages.
So this is just complex sponsorship, not in any manner where we're renting and, and there's, there's that fund. Isn't, isn't that supposed to be part of the
Money that goes towards rental rent.
But it would, that money still is going to be repair or the eventual turf replacement. Thank you.
It just is coded in a separate.
Different way.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries. My third action item is annual donation to Scholarship Foundation. Administration recommends approval of the annual donation in the amount of $1,000 to the School District of Superior Scholarship Foundation Student Activities Fund.
Move to proof. Second.
A motion in a second. Is there any discussion?
I just want to point out, we do, the, the board has, the board has traditionally done this on an annual basis. And so we're bringing this forward like we do every spring. Well, after spring.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. I have no discussion items tonight, and I have one informational item, Fund 10 Revenue and Expense Update. There's not really anything new to update in that long period. Do you guys have questions? That concludes my report.
All right. Thank you. And next we've got the Legislative Update.
All right. There's no action items, no discussion items, informational items. Both these topics were pulled from the Wasby Legislative Update page. There's links that you can click on. First one is Legislative Council Releases Report to Study Committee on Shared School Services. Legislators Join Legislative Council As we release the final report of a special legislative study committee that spent much of the summer and fall reviewing current barriers to the sharing of administrative or other services between school districts, exploring the statutory creation of incentives to encourage efficiencies, including school district consolidation and considering methods for sharing services. And just looking at the article, that's more about consolidating schools and school districts. Doesn't really apply to us.
Can I just add to that? We just had our local legislators also just attended a CISA 12 meeting about a week ago. And this was a, a big topic of conversation primarily for the smaller northern Wisconsin schools. Voicing their concern around the great distances between some of these districts and how consolidation isn't necessarily an option. So doesn't necessarily apply to us, just like you said, but
The next one, Governor Evers announces K-12 state budget initiatives. Governor Evers today announced details of his budget initiatives for K-12 education, including an overall increase of 2.6 billion. That figure includes significant investments in special education aid, increases in revenue limits and general aid, increases in low revenue ceiling, and more. In looking at that, that's right there. I asked, I asked Shannon to share a little bit because this can be deceiving for people that are just looking at it saying, oh, we might get all this money. And that's not the case right now. So I asked Shannon just to share a little bit more on that so people are clear that this isn't our budget yet.
Your, your point was actually raised at our school consolidation meeting. That was a question someone asked. Why aren't we going to get a lot of money and will that address our problem?
Yeah. So this is his ask. This is the governor's ask. Something that happens every, by any, and they'll come out with their all-in. Now the joint finance will go back and basically pick this apart and create their own asks. That would be the, you know, they'll keep going back and forth then until they come to an agreement. The business comes into play with the meetings around the state that they're pulling the budget rates of. I thought that we might have.
We're not, no. We were hoping to have the joint finance committee come to Superior and do a listening session, but.
I can't answer. Ask my question.
So. It's unanswered.
It rang your mind.
So this is where this would come into play. You know, we would likely go, somebody there, you know, I would go down and, and depending on where it is, have that conversation about, you know, pick some talking points on the Superior tough one, help it event at the school district. Obviously this is the one that we want. This would be our all-in.
This would be good.
Yeah, it could be great. It's not going to happen though. There'll be some odd night version of this that will hopefully by July.
When the question was asked, uh, in our committee meeting last week, my answer was that my, my experience, the best predictor of future behavior is past behavior. And historically, there has not been agreement between the joint finance committee and the governor's budget. Um, I do think we'll get something. I, you know, in our talk with local legislators, I think we will get something. I don't think it'll be anywhere near the governor's proposal, but we need to communicate how this impacts our district.
So I want to make it clear that anybody who's listening or whatever knows that this isn't the final deal, so.
And that, I, when, when does, when does he have, when do they have to agree on some type of final budget? I mean, we might not hear until July, but we could might not hear until August, September. Sometimes it's been that late.
October once or twice.
Yeah.
That's what we have to deal with.
Yep. So we, we have a great director of business services who does the great job of predicting.
Predicting the future.
Future of our.
How's that crystal ball?
Educated professional guest.
Crystal ball or that?
It's cloudy.
That black ball thing. All right. Thank you, Ed. Um, next up is the personnel negotiations meeting. Did through that one for Mike. Um, yeah, three action items. Uh, the first one is administration recommends approval of the March twenty twenty-three new hires, transfers and separations report.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion?
Why not? We've received our retirement deadline or the deadline has passed. So we've got a handful of experienced teachers leaving us next school year.
Not only teachers, but with Rick and Danette, my goodness, been in this district for, seems like forever.
All right. There's no other discussion then. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, the administration recommends approval of the new job description and new salary schedule for the district accountant position. This position will be in the professional category of the employee handbook and was previously titled bookkeeper.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. Otherwise it dies, but all right. We have a motion in a second. Discussion.
I'm going to be negative, which is why I wasn't going to second it. So sorry. Probably all know where I'm going here. But again, talking budgets and we don't have a clear vision of our budget yet. I'm hesitant on doing stuff like this. I know it's starting to step three thousand dollar difference and it's stuff that I think was like twelve thousands. Um, but nonetheless, we're being asked to upgrade this position, which costs us more money. And again, in the future, we're looking at budgets and maybe cuts, you never know. And I, I find it hard to approve something like this until we figure out what our budget is and what we're looking at. And I'd rather have something like this table for the future. Um, after we figure out where we're going forward with our, with our district and what our deficit actually is and what we're going to do to make that right.
Can I address your questions and then you can add to it? Is that, or? I'll start and then you add to it. One is in March's, um, not March, this is March, in April's board agenda. We have, um, we're planning to bring the reductions for next year. Um, I don't have that for you today because we're still working through the retirements that have recently come forward. So working with principals to determine which positions are going to be replaced, which ones aren't. So I will be bringing forward, um, uh, initial list of reductions for, for the next school year, which will help to offset some of those conversations we've had about additions. We will bring forward some of the reductions. So you can see that balance. Um, secondly, we just, we, we, I will say we desperately need someone in the business office to help with, with accounting in order to us, for, in a, in order for us to have a, a budget to bring forward to you. And that's an important position. So I'll, I'll let Shannon talk about the position.
Yeah, you know, between Molly and I, you know, it's definitely.
It's all. Twenty plus years.
Um, it desperately needed to be updated, uh, public. During the district position, along with my title, you have to have the position based on that. Um, I will tell you right now, we have one applicant that's still ten days. Um, I don't, this is market value for a, a position of this caliber. I, I think we have to move forward with it and we, we rely on me to adjust the budget necessary in order, in order to, uh, cover that gap between what you're saying, okay?
And that's the position that just retired, right? So we're, we're without somebody there right now.
Correct. We are very fortunate to have somebody internally. I have a name, David.
Doing two jobs, right? Which is not sustainable. I'm not speaking for you, David, but I'm assuming it's not sustainable.
Do accounting on the side?
He has a logistics and accounting degree. Which is unique.
So I do appreciate Shannon's word. I do trust what she says. And I'm not necessarily against it.
I know. But I think your point is, I think it's important. We bring some of those reductions forward. So you can see the balance of not just the additions we bring forward, but also how we're, how we're planning for next year.
I guess that's what I like to see.
Yeah.
Would we have those by next Monday?
I'm not prepared. I need to talk to teachers and I need to confirm sections and, and things with principals. And that work is really happening in the next couple of weeks. So I will have that ready for April.
Can we get it as soon as possible then too, before the meeting?
I can, yeah, I can, I can, I can send it to you in March, but it'll be, I'll, I'll send it or I'll present it publicly in the sessions. Part of the weekly update.
The things, the things I always worry about is when it comes time, you know, maybe it can be down to retirements or whatever. But anytime you come, time to cut a position, somebody's always going to say, just give this one more money and just give that one more money.
Include the rationale.
Yeah, so.
We won't have that information till April.
I will share it in the April board meeting after I've had a chance to confirm sections and positions with principals and teachers. But I can share that information ahead of the board meeting. So you, you have it ahead of that.
Right. So are you saying we can table it till April?
No, we really need to move forward with.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm.
We don't have a person in the business office. Yeah.
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll go off my trust with Shannon. Not that I don't trust you, but he's, he's like the, he's like the finance guru.
I know. You should, you should trust her. Yeah.
Hold that night over, but.
I suppose I can't ask. Oh, never mind.
It might not be able to answer. Okay.
No, I won't put on it. Never mind.
Is there any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are you Shannon?
Aye. Aye. Opposed?
Actually for David.
I'm sure David appreciates it.
But my concerns are noted.
Concerns are noted.
All right. Um, the last action item, administration recommends approval of the updated job description for the following positions in the professional category. That's the food service operations supervisor, previously titled culinary supervisor.
Want to move away from culinary supervisor?
You want to hear it from me? First we, is there a?
Motion to approve.
Hang on. We have a motion to approve.
Second, second.
Motion in a second. Now you can.
So, um, we, I came to you about a year ago looking for a culinary supervisor, a chef. We had a great deal of, um, we had a handful of candidates for that. We hired somebody and that position went vacant last October. And when we lose a key position in our department, we kind of just sit back and see what we can do differently. You know, and at that very same time, we had some discussions in our office and knew our food service secretary was going to be leaving. And she put in her notice last month and wondered how we could make this supervisor position more like what David operates in transportation with the assistant that he has in the office. And this position will be cost neutral and maybe even save some money because we will not be replacing that secretary. They're going to take on clerical duties and the supervision and assistant duties.
Did you mention it comes out of your?
Comes out of Fund fifty, not Fund ten.
Right, right.
Yes. So, yes.
So no impact on the general budget.
None whatsoever. Okay. Any questions?
Molly, did you have anything to add?
This is just up to you in the description of the job.
Pretty much. Change the title. Change title and eliminating one spot. Secretary. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
And there are no discussion items and no informational items. Um, that would then conclude the personnel associations committee's report. That concludes the committee agendas. Is there, are there any comments, uh, any other comments by members of the public tonight? All right. With that, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Time to go home and shovel snow.
Drive carefully.